Speaking.
Good evening and welcome to the May 9, 2024 meeting of Longview City Council. Tonight, our prayer and pledge are, is this what it says, being led by surprise with a smiley face. So please rise for a surprise in the smiley face.
Okay, let us pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you today with hearts full of gratitude for all the many blessings that you've bestowed upon our city of Longview. And we thank you for allowing Andy to serve as mayor for the last nine years and for your guidance along the way. And Lord, we pray for the new mayor, Kristen, and her council, that they would be united and that they may seek your wisdom for the decisions for our community. And Lord, I especially pray for her family and for her children and that you'll protect them from unkind words. And Lord, we just, I pray that you'll move in the hearts of the citizens of Longview, that their words and their actions might be that of kindness and goodness. And Lord, we also pray that you'll continue to unite our citizens and continue to move us toward unity. And that they will, and that we will love one another as you would have us to do. And Lord, we just thank you for the city of Longview's employees and the dedication that they put toward making Longview a better place to live. And Lord, we ask you to be with our first responders each and every day to guide and protect them as only you can do. And finally, Lord, we just want to ask that you be with our country and to navigate us through these difficult times. Lord, we love you and we thank you for all that you are. In your son's name we pray. Amen. Okay, and Andy James wants to say the Lord's Prayer for us. Say the Lord's Prayer, ready? Our Father.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. That ye do come, that he help thee out, and that thou doest it. And it is said, I did hear him. I wish for God to just pass against him. And with his love, and he done this, but he will whisper me. But I am a walking now from the past and God forever. Amen.
And to the republic, religious fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I love you, Granny.
A little unorthodox, but I'm gonna break tradition today. This is my granddaughter, Andy James. This is my daughter Spencer Madison, come up here, please. My other daughter Madison Kelly, my wife, who gave us a wonderful prayer. Thank you, Andy. My other granddaughter, Small Poppy, who went through the crisis for the trucking when she was crying a little bit, but that's what they do. So thank you all for enduring this. I appreciate you very much. This is my family and I appreciate y'all loving us for the last nine years and taking care of us and keeping us in your prayers. It means a lot to us and we appreciate the service you've been able to provide for the community. And we look forward to the days ahead when we're not doing this any longer.
I guess I just figured Luke would still be at the office working. What are you doing off work? Thank y'all very much. We have a few presentations. Proclamation proclaiming May 22 as Public Works Day. Let me read that and then I'll call everyone up, okay? Public Works Day, whereas the city of Longview Public Works Department has requested the mayor by proclamation recognize May 22, 2024 as Public Works Day in the city of Longview. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives recognized the week of May 19 as National Public Works Week. As mayor, I call upon the citizens of Longview to observe Wednesday, May 22, as Public Works Day in our great city. Whereas Public Works employees work around the clock to ensure our city's infrastructure, facilities, and services deliver dependable, sustainable, and resilient public health. They are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our roads, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and collecting trash and waste for our citizens. For now, therefore, Andy Mack, with authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, proclaim May 22, 2024 as Public Works Day in the city of Longview. Coming forward to receive this award will be Stephen Hubbard, Rhonda Hutchins, Jason Smithy, Christie Clark, Charles Sullivan, Tanya Alex, Keith Covington, and Chad Reinhardt. Y'all coming up? Thank you, guys. Thank y'all so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate y'all so much. Thank y'all. Thank you, sir. Come on out here. Thank you, buddy. You know, this is the heart and soul of a community. Public Works, the most unsung heroes that there are. You never see them until you need them, and when you need them, these people answer the dad gum bell. Never, ever, or not there when we need something. So we're so grateful to you all, what you do. So please keep up the good work. You keep Longview rolling and we appreciate your service. Thank you so much. Y'all appreciate y'all. Thank you so, so much.
I'm not doing that again. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate y'all. Thank you. Appreciate you, sir. Next, we have National EMS Week. Is this working now? Whereas a Longview Emergency Medical Service has requested the mayor by proclamation recognize the May 19 to 25, 2024 as National EMS Week in the city of Longview. Emergency medical services professionals are honoring our past, forging our future to recognize the 50th anniversary of the first National EMS Week. We honor those who came before us and we look forward to committing ourselves to forge a future as EMS professionals serving in our community. And the members of Emergency Medical Services teams commit to learning from our past five decades of service to the future of forging forward, a future in which the next generation has the tools to deliver compassionate care, alleviate suffering in our community. With the theme honoring our past, forging our future, I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. So therefore, Andy Mack, with authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, proclaim the week of May 19 to 25 as National EMS Week in the city of Longview.
Receiving this, we have Bradley Peeden, Joshua Mosley, Jason Davis, Alec Tipton, Blaine Cardinal, and Tommy Daniel. Hey, I guess, I guess you all understand how important EMS is. You know, these are the guys, once again, that when you need them, they're there. And hopefully, we don't ever need them, but we all will sooner or later. You'll know someone or have a family member that will need our EMS services. And you know, doesn't matter what time, doesn't matter what the weather, doesn't matter what it is, they're always there as well. We're so fortunate to have such a wonderful EMS crew right along with our public safety. We have the best public safety in the state of Texas and we show it every single day. Thank you, guys, and ladies, for what you all do for us. You keep the community going as well. Thank you very much. Y'all rock.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate y'all.
Now, we have National Police Week. Whereas the Longview Police Department has requested the mayor by proclamation recognize the week of May 12 to the 18 as National Police Week in the city of Longview. Congress and the President of the United States have designated this week in which May 16 falls as National Police Week. As mayor, I call upon the citizens of Longview to observe Thursday, May 16, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Let this day honor Longview police officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of that duty. Let us also recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Longview Officer George Tabler, September 1886. Lloyd Gaunt and B.C. Roberts, May 1948. Walter A. Connell, May 1971. Harvey L. Stevens, January 1972. Marshall Siders Jr., November 1977. And Sergeant Randy L. Davis, January 1984. For now, therefore, Andy Mack, with authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, proclaim the week of May 12 to the 18 as National Police Week in the city of Longview. Chief Moon, come forward and the LPD Command Staff, please. I'm not sending this to any of y'all. You know, I'm honored to even be on the stage with you, gentlemen, and the ladies that serve in our, in our police officers division. Y'all, you put your lives on the line every single day and we appreciate it. Thank you. You read these names of officers that have fallen, that have given their lives, that have sacrificed their families, their futures for us. And we want to complain? Shame on us. Shame on us all. We should never, ever do that because these men and women put their lives on the line. Every day they wake up, every morning they go to work, they don't know if they'll come home to see their families again. So that's not the job I want. Thank you that you do the job that I don't want to do. I really, really appreciate you. And I know every citizen in Longview knows what a good job that you do. We are so fortunate to have the public safety in Longview that we have, and I'll say it every time I get up here, the best public safety in the state of Texas, police and fire. Thank you all very much. Y'all have the best.
I'm honored. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Appreciate y'all.
Those were great proclamations and I really appreciate everyone being here to be able to witness that and honor those men and women that deserve such, such recognition. We are now to citizen comment. I do have one speaker card. Ian Kettin. Please state your name and address if you would, sir.
Good, Ian Kettin. I actually live at 2145 Dura Road in Karnak, Texas. However, I'm a former Longview resident and I'm a weekly participant in the city of Longview Parks and Rec Department Adult Softball Leagues and have been so since 2017. I wanted to bring attention tonight some issues and concerns and thoughts in the managing of the leagues and upkeep of Hensley Park where we play. I am aware that no one can control weather and things such as rainouts can occur, but my issue is not with the weather, but with the handling of the, and the actions and decisions made in calling those cancellations. Last week, Thursday, May 2, Longview was hit with some rain showers early morning, but they cleared by 9:00. One of my fellow coaches had come towards the beginning of the afternoon and assessed the states of the field. He noticed there was one worker there who gathered trash and left to another part of the park, never to be seen again. Another teammate of mine had sent an email to Andres Z, the athletic supervisor, and had asked him if games would be on that evening. His reply was the following. The crews are trying to see what fields are okay to play. They said they would let me know around 3:00 P.M. if we can play or not. I will let you know. At this point, I had joined the other coach at the field to check out and see if any work was being done. There was none. Nothing was being raked, no chalk was being put out, and nothing was being done to soak up puddles or anything like that the entire time we were there. It was just me and him. We were the only two people in the park the entire time. At 3:01, the supervisor had sent an email saying that the games were canceled. The crew went back earlier to check the field and they just checked again and the field's just too wet. Except that they didn't. In the time that either one of us is there, no one had come by. I called the athletic supervisor and asked him how they came to that conclusion. He again informed me that the crews had just checked again and made that call. I disputed this with him, saying that no one had been there because I was there and my other fellow coach was there and not a single person had come by. Unsurprisingly, he was not able to offer any explanation for this. In the 2024 spring season between all three leagues, there are 27 softball teams. And at the registration rate of $385 per team, that comes up to $10,395 in registration fees. Over the, and we play three seasons a year, so over the course of a year, that's almost $40,000. And we're not seeing any of this money be diverted into being able to make the park that we play at playable, even if we get a light smattering of rain followed by hours of beating sun. We at least want someone to look into providing infield dirt, tools, tarps, or anything so fields can be upcaped and we can maximize games we played and that we pay for to play. Especially because as of our most recent coaches meeting, we were told that only one game could be rescheduled. Facing rainouts, the park department could not guarantee the eight games that we pay for. And if that would be the case, we would not be eligible to receive any type of prorated rate towards any other season.
Time is up. Thank you, sir. Yes. Is there someone else who would like to speak and fill out a speaker card afterwards? Please come forward, state your name and your address and fill out a card when you finish, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Shanda Mitchell at 407 Rosedale, 75604. I was given this today and I just want to confirm it, that there is a special permit that's going to be granted to the bio-mining facility, is that correct, that y'all are voting on tonight?
Ma'am, we don't interact with you during this time. It's your time to speak and we just listen.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that before I, you know, say anything. My grandson goes to school right across the street. We drink well water. We have many farms that we pass by every day. We have lots of land. And it says that the results aren't known. What it can cause, unfortunately, that's not the complete truth. I would like to just state some facts very quickly. Mine waste are the unwanted byproducts left behind after the ores of economic interest have been extracted and can be solid, liquid, or gas. That was written in 2010 in an article. Results suggested an association between risk of dying due to digestive respiratory and other cancers, which I won't go into, but it's a 95% mortality rate for people that live around mining. This was in 2011 and it was the pollution of the environment by the metals and everything that was from the mining facility absolutely destroyed the plants, the water, the air, which we cannot live with at all. So I would like to take into consideration these things, that this is our communities, this is our families, this is our farmers, this is our land, this is our air. And I am here to say vote no, because you can do, just like I did, and look at the whole list of reasons why. And these are proven, thousands of documents. So I'm here to just stand on behalf of my community and my family and say, they need me. And they don't need me driving past this facility every day and they don't need all of these children right across the street. They have a 0 to 12 grade level and they have all families in between and farmers. Thank you.
Ma'am, this is on our agenda later. If you want to stick around, you'll hear more discussion on this, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I have no more speaker cards, so we will move on to our public safety update. We will start with Chief Moon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Mcfee. First, I want to cover our April stats. So for the month, our average response time was 4 minutes 31 seconds on our priority one call. So again, staying under that five-minute average that we shoot for every month. Our calls for service during the month were 5,144. And if you look at our traffic stops, there are 3,702. So if you kind of average that out, that's almost around 120 traffic stops a day. So again, very proud of that. DWI cases were 20 and our crashes for the month were 202. El Myra Chapel Discovery School, they invited us out for a show and tell. So obviously, all the kids always love the canine, so we had the dog out there and also covered some other safety with them as well and definitely appreciate the invite out there. And as of April 30, Little Thai House is one of our newest partners to have one of our signs up for give a heart, have a heart and give smart. And also, as of yesterday, we have added another charitable foundation on our site and now we have the Salvation Army on there as well to go along with Longview Community Ministries, United Way at Cotta, and the Women's Center of East Texas. And also thanks to Buckner Community Resource Day for inviting us out there. And we, you can see from the pictures there, we had our child ID going on. So we got some kids signed up on that and packets given to their parents and hopefully they never have to use that. And then also on our Gregton Rotary Club, they came out to the police department last Friday and had a little show and tell there and I had the opportunity to speak with them and answer a few questions and enjoy that quite a bit. And then also on Friday, we had the retirement of Sergeant Jackie Howes after 38 years of service. And of course, he retired and he was still back up there yesterday getting some, he said he needed to get some training done, so he came up there to do that. He just loves us that much. And coming up next week to go along with Police Week, we will have our annual banquet, Giants of Law Enforcement. That will be on Tuesday evening, May 14. So if you don't have your tickets, Publix invited to that as well. Still come out and join us for that. And finally, you know, whatever your interest might be, I bet we have a spot that fits, fits that at the Longview Police Department. So turn everyday interest into a fulfilling career. Please come and join our team. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any question, Chief Moon? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Stillman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Mcfee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some information about the fire department since our last council meeting. With the end of the school year nearing, we've been able to hit some career fairs. We've, we've hit a couple here in the last two weeks. Spent a lot of time out at Pine Tree High School, interacting with our high school students that may be getting ready to graduate, trying to decide what steps are next with their life. Certainly gave us the opportunity to showcase the Longview Fire Department and what we have to offer. So hopefully, we'll reap some benefit out of that. Had some great questions, some great interactions. So we appreciate the collaboration with Pine Tree, allowing us to be there that day. And on the other side of town, a little bit younger group, we got to go out to Halswell West Elementary to plant the seed for a potential career in the fire service. I'll use me for an example. I knew by the time I was in the second grade, believe it or not, that this was the career that I wanted to do. And so I believe in this, in this method, in this process of getting out to these kids at that very young age to impress upon them that this is, this is an opportunity and a potential career path for somewhere down the road. So I appreciate Halswell for letting our crews go out and interact with their students. As everybody should be aware, if you watch the news anytime lately, we're right in the middle of severe weather season. We have a thread of it just tonight. So I wanted to put this message out there as kind of a PSA. From time to time, we still see this as an issue here inside the city when we have localized flooding and people make the unwise decision to drive through high water. And most of the time, this results in a call for the fire department to have to come into action to rescue people out of their vehicles. We've been fortunate and it's just a matter of time that maybe we're going to be unfortunate and potentially lose somebody. You see this happening in other communities and other places and we certainly don't want to see that happen here. So the, the model of turn around, don't drown is what we're going to push and highly recommend. It's not worth it. You know, people, you just don't know if there's even still a roadway out there underneath that moving water. So just turn around, find another route and avoid that hazard. And along with severe weather season, I just want to promote this once again, that the city has a free service. You can go to longviewtexas.gov/alerts to get the most current, up-to-date weather information as far as thunderstorm warnings, tornado warnings, and watches and things that are potentially impacting our community so that you can be weather-aware and make good decisions for you and your family. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question for Chief Stillman? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mayor.
We're not a consent agenda. Andy Adams County law pulled off for separate discussion. If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're in now to zoning. We have a public hearing held to consider application PD 24-01. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Mcfee. The applicant is requesting to rezone from planned development for a nursing home to planned development for office located at 1156 East Hawkins Parkway. Originally, this planned development was set for a nursing home, which was developed directly to the west of this property. And so the nursing home subdivided this lot off and the applicant is proposing to build an office at this property. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require public hearing, which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held to consider application S 24-04. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a bio-mining processing facility to extract precious metals and other elements from recycled materials within heavy commercial zoning district for property located at 2120 East Loop 281. Previously, a vessel fabrication shop was located at this site. The applicant is proposing a bio-mining facility, which includes recovering precious metals and other elements from recycled materials in a low-carbon biotech process. A specific use permit is required for this facility within heavy commercial zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. East Loop 281 is classified as a principal arterial roadway and is maintained by tech staff. This type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require public hearing, which is now open. I have five speaker cards on this. Two wish to speak and three are for questions only. Our questions only are Wayne Mansfield, Heather Malone, and Walter Northcutt. Y'all are available for questions only. Our speakers on this, we have a Charles Hunt.
Charles Hunt, I reside at 1113 Delia Drive. And he's just got some real questions and problems about this being passed. Some unanswered questions I've got. First of all, we do have a Christian school across the road from that, that city of Longview. We have property in the city of Longview, Longview with about 150 students with a daycare. And then, of course, West Elementary is right down the road. There are houses all around on Delia Drive. There are houses on the other street. Forgive me. Starts with an H. Cedar Hill, yes, Cedar Hill. I tried today to find out what company is doing this so we could do research, find out what kind of company it was. Was told that we cannot divulge the company until after you pass the permit. It would be mayor like you having someone come to work for you and someone tells you, you're expecting them to be in your organization another 10 or 15 years, but they tell you he's good and there is no problem and everything's great and you go ahead and hire him without ever meeting him, without ever running any background checks, without doing anything. It's just unusual. I can't understand why we can't table this and get, get the horse back in front of the... cart where we understand who is doing this. I know there's an LLC, but that doesn't mean anything. That means they're probably going to turn it over to somebody else. I want to know who they are. I'd like to know what the spill response might be. I'd like to know the acid. Is it sulfuric acid? Is it hydrochloric? Is it nitric acid? It's going to be hauled in on 18-wheeler tankers? That's the only way you could get it in there? It's a terrible intersection at Page Road and 281. One of those gets in an accident, we've got major problems there. And then, of course, the other materials and all that will be done. And we both know that if we pass this permit within one or two years, this company and facility will be able to do anything it wants to do under Texas law. I was told that this is the only place in the state of Texas that meets their criteria. I find that truly, truly hard to believe, that out of the entire state of Texas, this 1220 East 2105 is the only place in the state of Texas that meets this criteria. Please vote no, or at least table it, and let's get more information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next, our next speaker is Wayne Rosette. Is that correct? Hope I didn't butcher that, sir.
Wayne Rosette, 700 in the lane, Longview. I guess when I first saw this bio-mining, it caught my attention because there's leach mining going on in, in East Texas. It's beginning new mining of lithium, and some of those activities are going on. And I wanted to make sure that this process here was not injecting anything into the ground for recovery minerals from the ground. Also, I'd like to know that this facility is going to be totally enclosed. If operation, if they're using those same buildings, will it be totally enclosed process there? And then, as the previous speaker said, I'd like to know who is doing this. This could be any company that comes in here. I'd like to know that they're a reputable company, that they've got experience. As I've talked to your people here, I've discovered, I guess, that this is more of a recycling operation. They're going to be crushing components, electrical components. And the recovery process, in the past, has typically been acids, and how, what's their recovery process, and making sure that they don't lose anything onto the ground. Cadmium, silver, gold, these type of materials can be highly toxic if they're spilled, and just want to be, have assurances that this will be a good operation there, that, and I don't know what the process is from here, do, who issues the Texas Commission on Quality, Environmental Quality. They have to issue a permit, I suspect, with that, and would like to know how that process proceeds and that all that is done in appropriate order. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, our TCEQ will have to have a permit for this, obviously. But we have some questions that have been raised. Would anyone like to address any of those questions, Ms. Choi, or Mr. Northcutt, or Mr. Mansfield, or Ms. Malone? Anybody want to answer any of these questions while we're here? We have Mr. Mansfield coming to the podium. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mansfield is, is the head of LEEDCO, so thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. Just to address a couple of things, the anonymity of the project is absolutely necessary because this project came through the governor's office. Whenever we receive requests for information, or companies are looking to expand, we get into a competitive situation with other communities, not just within Texas, but with other states, communities in other states. So the anonymity is critical for really one big reason. Many of these companies are governed by SEC regulations. And if the information that that company is going to expand gets out, people start making insider trading investments. So there's protection for the company and for the community. There is no outside operation. This is, there was a news release that went out on, on one of the news stations that was absolutely incorrect. This is not a mining operation. There's not going to be any digging, TracO, computer monitors laying on the ground. This is an inside, green operation. They're bringing in motherboards from CPU units already broken apart and super sacks and taking them through a process to extract the precious metals from them. There are secondary containers to seal the chemicals involved with that. There are no gases. We did have an environmental consultant look at the necessary permit requirements for them. They are required to have two TCEQ permits. One is air quality, but that will be issued because it is by rule, because their emissions are so below the minimal requirements, there's no permit necessary. It's issued by rule. The second one would be for recycling, and there are a lot of governancees associated with the recycling component of that, one of which main one is, they will be required to put up an insurance policy, a bond, or a letter of credit to ensure that if there is any incident out there upon closure, they will be responsible for cleaning that site. So far as traffic, there's 20 employees and less than one truck movement per day. So the traffic impact on it is going to be very nominal. Any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Walter, you have anything you need to add, or Heather?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
So is this the only?
Would you please go to the microphone, sir? Just so everybody can hear you that's not here in the room.
So this is the only place in the entire state?
No, sir. We're in a competitive situation with other communities. We don't know who those communities are.
As far as I'm concerned, I'd say let's pass on it and let somebody else have it.
Thanks, sir. Walter, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, Walter Northcutt, I reside at 1705 Wood Place, Longview, Texas. I've lived here all my life. I represent 2120 East Loop 281 LLC. It's the owner of the building. The owner of the building is not interested in the superfund site. They, I mean, I've lived here my whole life. I wouldn't be associated with something that would bring something, I mean, my children have lived here, your grandchildren live here. I'm not doing anything like that. The owners don't want to do something like that. I mean, I think what got this all worked up was this TV thing that was on, and it, they didn't call us, they didn't ask one question to us about what was going on. They put this thing on there, it has all these giant machines doing all this stuff. He didn't even know what they were doing, and he's talking about mining waste and all sorts of stuff that has absolutely nothing to do with. And so if it works, everybody, I mean, we want to be good citizens. We don't want a superfund site in the middle of Longview, Texas. And so I'm happy to meet with anybody, I mean, here, or outside, or wherever. It doesn't matter. I mean...
So this, this, as we understand, this is an internal?
Inside.
Inside operation. There's no digging, there's no mining, there's no backhoe, there's no burying, there's nothing. It's an inside, basically recycle plant.
That's exactly what it is. And it's a 15-acre, 62,000-foot building that is not an insignificant investment for the people that own it. They're not going to let people ruin it by doing things that would be detrimental to Longview or anywhere else.
Okay.
And like they say, they've got to have bonds and all sorts of things up through the TCEQ. Anyway.
Yes, sir.
My next question would be, where would the, the acid would be used with water, where does the wastewater go? Is it on the ground?
No, sir. It'll be discharged into pipes.
Into pipes that go to the city? That, where you get water from?
There, well, it's our understanding that Public Works has reviewed that, and there is no pretreatment required. But again, because the discharge limits are so minimal that nothing is required of that.
I would still say, I'm a citizen, been a citizen here 20 years. I love this town more than, I love it more than anyplace we've ever lived. Of course, I came from Port Arthur, so it's not a whole lot of deal to love this place. But just a few short time ago, we were able to keep a Brookshire Food Center out of a neighborhood because the neighbors didn't want it. I would say at least we could cite the people on Cedar Hill and Dilia, whose land, that's in my front yard, whose land is there, and find out if our neighborhood wants it. And if not, move it to another neighborhood. I don't think any of y'all would want it moved next door to you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. White, do you have a question?
No, I don't, sir. They have to.
Okay.
One thing, too, to point out is, you know, the market for these, for any business that comes to Longview, we don't decide where they go. When we receive an RFI from a company or from a consultant, we give them options. If it meets their key criteria, building size, land size, capacity of water, fire protection flow, there's hundreds of parameters that we have to vet through. This particular site met their requirements in terms of size, building height, and proximity to interstate. It's zoned for the use, and that's where they located. Now, other competing sites, they probably have a similar, but so far as in Longview, there's no other site. We have a very, very, and Walter certainly can speak to this, a very low inventory of available buildings within the city of Longview. This particular building happened to meet their key criteria.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you have another question? You'd like to say something?
Yeah.
Okay, please come forward again.
My question is, can we at least request from the company, before anything is done, their chemical, the chemical compounds by Hudson and Edwards in 2011? It says pollution of the, of the environment by metals from mine waste is a global environment issue due to their widespread distribution and potential toxicity to humans, plants, and wildlife. Can we not request a chemical analysis of what will be coming out of the plant?
Okay.
And that would be, once, if, if the company decides to locate here in Longview, and once they make the permit to TCEQ, all of that information will be revealed then. And TCEQ will have the regulatory authority over that, along with the city's building and fire codes.
Wayne, what is the economic impact of, of, will this business be?
I'll let Heather speak to that.
So this is roughly a $19 million project of capital expenditures from the company itself, about, starting with 20 jobs, ramping up to like 28 jobs, with salaries at about $60,000 annually.
You said $19 million capital investment?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would say that, that's not counting the investment that the owners are making in the property also.
Someone has a question. Ms. Carpenter?
Mr. Mansfield, you're honestly telling me that you did not look at the West Industrial District for this location?
If there's a building available with 32-foot ceilings?
That's the question.
Yes, we, absolutely, we do. We vet every project out.
And number two, are you aware they're using sulfuric acid?
I'm not aware of the acids because nothing has been submitted that I've seen. But again, once they submit to TCEQ, that, that information will have to be divulged.
My question again is, I just think we're getting the cart before the horse. I remember several years ago, it's not this council, but one of our councils submitted, and we passed a resolution and gave a permit, and it ended up being an adult bookstore, after we'd already permitted it. There wasn't anything anybody could do. We're opening a can of worms here that we're not sure what's going to happen. And I just feel like, for the, for the mind, $19 million is nothing compared to our children's life in the future.
Ms. Choi, do you have anything to add on this, as far as the specific use permit goes?
So as far as this use, this use is, it's not allowed by right in this zoning district, but it does require council action to allow this use in heavy commercial zoning district. And so that's why this case is before council, to make that decision to allow for the specific use permit for a recycling facility like this, this bio-mining facility. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Newstead?
Yeah, so, and this is for Wayne or Heather. So I want to just kind of go through this, because I've fielded a lot of questions and concerns, and a lot of these have already been addressed and talked about. But I want to kind of go through the whole thing, too. One thing that, the, the visual, so like, just going through the pollution stuff. So visual, for instance, you mentioned this was going to be indoors, and so is there going to be any sort of like, you know, eyesores, anything that's going to detract from the, because the loop is heavily traveled, is a very, like, major risk.
No, we've actually, we have, through a non-disclosure, we have, we do know the company. But again, operating under the non-disclosure, we have seen a video of their operation. It, there's nothing outside, there's nothing unappealing, and I know the owners of the property are making some pretty significant improvements to it, but nothing, no storage outside, nothing like that.
Okay. And then regarding the water pollution, so there is, they're not, they're not dumping it on the, like, ground, they're going through the whole thing?
No.
They're not, they're not in a treatment process before they go into the, the water, the sewage?
No. Apparent, according, again, according to what Public Works has stated, no pretreat is necessary because their discharge is minimal. So it will discharge into the wastewater system.
Okay, so there's, yeah, they're saying it's not of concern. So water pollution's not there. And then, sound? So I know the previous place there was a vessel, and there was a lot of issues with sound there, too. Do we know how that would be?
To my knowledge, again, it will be minimal. Everything is enclosed. So I can't answer specifically to that because I have not witnessed it firsthand.
Okay, but it's not like heavy metal, it's, there's small?
No, no, no. There's not welding banging of anvils or anything like that.
Okay. And then traffic, you alluded to that. So you said there's going to be 20 employees, ramp up to maybe 28, and then you said there's going to be, how many trucks coming through there?
Less than one a day, on average.
Okay. So that, not going to add to the congestion that we already have at Page and Dilia. And then we've addressed the suitable location. The other ones that was brought up, so this is not a mining operation, right? This is, so this is purely a recycle?
No, there's no TracO digging in the ground, there's no cutting down trees, no leaching or anything like that.
Okay. And then, the question was asked by Wayne, the recovery process, I don't know what he refers to that. He asked about the recovery process?
Recovery of?
Precious metals.
Wayne, yeah, the precious metals. Wayne asked it. I don't know if he's still here.
The process in which they're recovering those metals, you look at file mining, it's supposed to be by microbes, I guess, new technology, so that's the process they're using or not?
Yes, it is. It is.
But they're not doing it for rock?
No.
Because I, on the, on the media coverage, it was about extracting from ore, rock, or whatever the case is.
No.
Okay. And then, they have the storage at extra containers for case of spill response?
That will be in secondary containers, correct.
Secondary containers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, and the acid, sulfuric acid, and you said we don't know about that?
I'm not, I'm, I don't know. I can see what we can find out, but no, I don't know.
And then, I'm trying to see if I can get a various question. And this is, again, this is going to be regulated by TCEQ, the state agency?
Correct.
And they're, because they're aware there's schools nearby, daycare, all that different stuff that can come residential?
Well, once, once the permit, I would imagine part of their vetting process is to examine all of that information.
Okay, and it's been vetted by the state, it's come from the governor's office?
Correct. When we get projects in, or when they go out through the RFI process, the state does vet them for profitability, for the fact that they're a legitimate business and they can stand on their leg. And then we vet them further, as, as it pertains to the local community.
Okay. And then, that was all the questions I have right now.
Wayne, let me ask you a question. I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this whole thing. So the existing building is already there. It's vacant, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if this company goes into this existing building, will anyone even know there's anything different inside that building, what's, that's what's going on right now? Will there be any visible change?
No.
So you won't even know that there are people in it? It's not going to have a visible change?
Other than it may be some improvements to the outside.
Okay. So it's not going to change the site? So what was across from your backyard is still going to be across your backyard. They're not going to tear it down or build something different?
No.
It's going to stay exactly the way it is. There's going to be a mining process going on inside of some sort that, I don't, I don't know anything about mining, but I assume that someone does, obviously. So physically, there's going to be no change in the neighborhood, except there's going be a tenant there instead of not having a tenant there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, our concern is, is what the tenant is and what they're doing.
Correct.
And if, I guess we, what we're looking for out here from these citizens is that assurance that nothing's gonna be adversely done in that's, inside the building, that will affect those people outside the building. So, who can give us that assurance?
Well, you know, there, nothing is risk-proof.
Right, right, I, I get that. I get that. That's why I asked Ms. Choi about the specific use permit. If we, let's just hypothetically say, if we approve a specific use permit tonight, but then we find out that what they're gonna do inside there is not what we thought they're gonna do inside there, can we rescind our specific use permit, Ms. Choi?
That would be a question for the city.
I would probably defer to our city attorney, Mr. Ray.
That's what I was hoping to hear from Robert Ray. That's what I wanted. Wake up, Robert.
You can rezone, we, you know, typically, the city, in the past, has rezoned only at the request of a, of a property owner. But legally, you can, you could come back and decide to rezone. Whenever you rezone without the cooperation of the property owner, of course, you, you open yourself up, you know, potentially, to, to litigation or, or legal claims about that. But theoretically, the property, any property could be rezoned even without the permission of the, and, and what, to clarify, the Texas courts have said, an SUP is really a type of rezoning. That's what it is. Unfortunately, everyone uses the word permit, but it's not a permit. It is a type of rezoning that is specific to that property.
So, if we were to approve a specific use permit, and the company decided to come to Longview, 'cause, just 'cause we approve a specific use permit, does not mean they're still coming to Longview. They're still, that just means we're in the running. We, there's still no decision that they're going to come here. That's between them and whoever's doing negotiating. If they, well, just one second, I want you up here. If they were to decide to come here, and we were to find out what they're gonna do does not meet what we thought they were gonna do, we, or this council, whoever's here, could change that if necessary.
And I also have a comment, like, typically, businesses like this that deal with environmental stuff have to go through numerous processes with the TCEQ, correct? So, not only do they have to have ongoing certifications, it's, to my understanding, they also have to pay a certain fee to get these certifications, and then they go through either quarterly or monthly tests where the TCEQ will come at random to make sure that there is no negative environmental impact, such as like in gas stations or other things that we approve similar to this, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Walter, and Heather, just, Walter, one second. And Walter, as you said, the owner of the building doesn't want something going on in his building that would be detrimental to the community either, correct?
No.
So, if that were the case, he's not obligated to sell the building if he doesn't want, or rent, lease the building, whatever he's doing with the building?
Yeah.
Correct?
Right.
Okay, and then, one last question, let whoever start. We need to ask ourselves this question, also. They're going to be recycling electronics, correct?
Correct.
That would normally, people just throw them in the dump ground, right?
That's right.
Would rather have them thrown in our dump, our landfill, or we would have somebody recycle them under a controlled environment? If it is a controlled environment that we can, that we approve of, is that not a better place for our electronics to go than to our landfill that can't do anything with the electronics? But?
Yeah, ma'am, that was my previous comment. Because what's been put out there, Walter and Wayne, is that that backyard of this facility is gonna be a wasteland for monitors and CPUs. And so, I think that's part of the miscommunication that's happening.
Wayne, in a couple of points I'd like to make. One is, the landlord absolutely does not want an environmental issue. That's one.
Sure.
Second thing is, is the landlord hadn't even committed to lease to these people yet. The problem is, they won't commit to Longview without a special use permit, okay? We don't even know if they'll pay the rent on the building yet.
Sure.
So, you, you gotta have a spec, you gotta have a building that is viable, that they can lease, before you can even get to the point where you can lease it, okay? So, if, if it turns out, I mean, they know who all these people are and all this kind of stuff, and they've seen all this stuff, but the landlord will not lease to somebody that is gonna ruin their property. So, unless the landlord can be convinced that it's a good thing, they're not gonna lease to them anyway. But we don't know whether we lease to them or not if we can't, if, if what they do can't be done in the building, if that makes sense.
Right, yes. Wayne, you said this is brought to you all by the state of Texas, from the governor's office?
Correct.
So, has the state of Texas, as well as Leadco, vetted this?
Yes.
This project?
Yes.
The state of Texas and Leadco have vetted the project?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And also, an environmental consultant was also, that is also advising on this project, has also said it's a great, a great project.
Has reviewed the processes, that's correct.
And then, the vetting of the property owner, as Walter said?
One of the things, the property owner does have their own environmental consultant that's looking at this at the same time. And I can categorically tell you, if it's something that's gonna cause a problem for the landlord, they're not doing it.
And this, this is where I'm, this is where I'm at with this, right? So, you know, we can't give assurances, there's nothing, there's no way that if anything could go in there. Another vessel fabrication could go in there, there could other, be other things that could cause environmental concern that could go in there as it is right now, right?
Without any comment.
But this seems like it's a very vetted project, coming, as we mentioned, to all the different vetting sources, right? And we, we can't regulate the regulator, right? So, the TCEQ is the one that's responsible for this, and TCEQ, I did look, on your, on their website, you can go there and file a complaint with TCEQ. So, if you feel like this is not a viable, suitable project, project for that area, you can register your complaint. There's also, you can speak to your state representative. It's a, this is a, a state agency that is over the regulation of it. Us, as council, is not our responsibility to regulate the regulator, is how I see this.
Michelle?
Yes, sir. So, I'd like to make a comment, just to clear some concerns. I don't, the reason that they're not necessarily divulging this information, to my understanding, when the governor's office gives us a project or something of that nature, there's an alias that's assigned to it for competition reasons, because there could be different municipalities or other regions to bid for it. And so, it's not that, I don't think it's like a secrecy thing where, you know, it's like, they don't want to know who this, these people are. And I know that the governor's office goes through numerous vetting processes before they even allow these types of businesses to be bid into our economic system. And so, that's correct, right? That's the reason why?
That's correct.
Okay. Just one second. Sir, okay, go ahead, sir. Then ma'am, you come up next, and then Heather, you're next after that.
I, I just wanted to ask, John, I, I understand, and we're not concerned with the vetting. The bottom line, if they painted the front of the building, it would look better than it's looked in 15 years. My concern is that there's no safe, guaranteed way to handle sulfuric acid and the different kinds of acid that is going to be used. There's no guarantee that things will not get out of hand there. You mentioned that the council's responsibility is not to do the vetting and not all of that. I agree with that. Your responsibility is to the citizens of Longview. So, I'm asking you, do a survey of everyone on Cedar Hill, let's hire somebody, and go door-to-door and find out what the citizens of Longview want. I can tell you, I'm going in a rattlesnake business, and it'll be safe, but I don't wanna build a rattlesnake farm next to my house. I mean, I can tell you it's gonna be safe all the time, but no one can guarantee that. All I'm asking you as a council to do is do what the citizens of Longview want done.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, sir. Please understand.
Okay, I understand.
But, you know, this went through planning and zoning, and planning and zoning is required to inform everybody within a certain distance of the project before planning and zoning meets, and?
They, they, they put up a couple of signs.
That, that's their responsibility, and that's your chance, that's your opportunity to, to express your concerns at planning and zoning. You understand that, right?
I, I understand that.
We get, once it comes from planning and zoning, then we have to make decisions, but I'm, I'm explaining something else to you.
But here is the place where people speak more than planning and zoning.
But, we, as a council, as you say, it's our responsibility to the citizens, but if, if we, if we had to take every building that somebody wanted to rent and, and ask every person around it, is it okay to rent that and that somebody didn't, didn't like it, Longview is never gonna rent a, a building ever. Because not everybody wants some, we can't, we can't guarantee what goes, I can't guarantee what goes next to me unless I'm gonna buy my, buy the property.
Totally agree.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We're not trying to be a blockade in progress.
So, what I'm saying is, don't change the, don't change the zoning.
We're, we're not changing zoning, we're just giving a specific use permit.
Yes, you are. That's just exactly what the attorney said. It was changing the zoning. He said it's changing, did I miss that, Mr. Ray? It was changing the zoning? You call it a permit, but it's really a zoning?
It's a specific use permit, is what we're voting on.
Well, then, don't, don't vote on that.
Okay.
We already have a permit there. Go with what we have.
Okay. I understand, sir. I'm just letting you know.
I don't wanna argue with you.
No, no, I, I, no, we're not arguing, we're just visiting. I, I understand your concerns.
I know that, I know that.
I do. I appreciate your concern.
And if I were in your chair, and you were in mine, I'd be doing the same thing.
Absolutely.
I agree with that.
I appreciate you're a gentleman, your, your way you're handling yourself, you're doing just fine. Thank you, sir.
Well, I just, okay, thank you.
Okay, now, Heather was next, and then, then you, ma'am, and then we're gonna probably wrap this up.
Now, I was just going to say about the permitting, when we were talking about permitting, that they will still be required to go through, all of the city's required permitting as well. So, you know, the, the wastewater will be tested and it, ongoing. I mean, it's not just a one-time we're testing and making sure it's good. They continue to test any of the wastewater that goes into the system. They will also be required to provide the plans for what's going into the building, what the stacks look like, as far as storage goes, to development services for permitting as well. So, this, it's not just a, this is the only time the city's looking at it and we're done. The city will continue to do their due diligence through the permitting process that's required.
And remember, there's still no guarantee they're gonna choose us, even if, even if they were granted a specific use permit, it's still a competitive process, and we know how that works with Leadco.
Heather, real quick, I'm sorry. The air emission also was, again, was so low?
Correct.
That it was by, just permit by rule, right?
Correct, correct.
So, there's air emissions, non?
Was not a concern. With the, the local environmental consultant that we work with, she's reviewed the, the process and had no concerns with it at all. And she wanted to point out that, you know, this is, they're pulling out precious metals from this process. It's a very small process, and it's a fairly large building. So, there's not a lot of environmental impact, if any environmental impact, that is gonna be adverse to the area.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you have one more question?
My last question to the gatekeepers. Why do we not have anybody here who has a knowledge of chemicals? This gentleman right here said a word, and I'm hearing all of this watered down, this gentleman right here hit it on the head. It is released in four different forms. I took the ChemTech program at TSTC. I want to know why there is not, they already have a facility, why is that not on your desk to tell you the environmental impact where they already are? Why is there not somebody here that knows about chemicals that can let y'all know, even if they decide to come here, what kind, and you decide to change the zoning, what damage is already done? I want to know why they're not here.
And that, that can be no damage done until we approve it. They can't start anything without our approval, and we can't discuss chemicals when they haven't even told us what their chemical process will be. We don't know that.
Exactly.
But, but?
That's my point.
No, 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 I understand your point, but the, the thing is, if someone opened an auto mechanic stop next door, I don't know anything about auto mechanic either. So, I, I, that's not what we do. We don't, we don't dissect that. We look at what we can do as a council to promote the city, which is what we're supposed to do. So, I understand your concern. We, there's a lot of unanswered questions, but the biggest unanswered question is, will they choose us even if we allow them to? We don't even know that yet. So, we're not to that point, but there's no way they're gonna put something in that building without us knowing what they're doing. That's just not, there's no way that can happen.
Mayor, real, real fast, they did have an environmental consultant with Leadco that is also, that has vetted through this, right? They've also, again, it came through the state, the governor's office through here as well, that also requires vetting. It has to go to TCEQ, which also requires vetting. The property owner, according to Walter, is also going to require their own environmental. So, that's, that's what I'm saying. That's all been done. They don't need to be here to understand, but for us to understand, we, that all this has been done, all this process has been completed, and all this stuff has been vetted, that's, it's, it's been done.
Yes, sir. And I understand, I honor everything that y'all do, but I can pull up a thousand research papers that have let people come in, and they had all of that, and there's 95% mortality around them.
Mr. Carpenter, you have a question?
Jay Stillman. If we got a disaster at that facility, can we handle it being that far east on the town?
Mr. Carpenter, my best answer is, we're a regional hazmat team. We respond to locations like this anywhere in the 14-county ETCOG region with a full complement of hazardous materials technicians.
Okay, thank you. The second question, does anybody pay attention to the fact that there's 30,000 pounds of fertilizer next door? Has anybody even thought about that?
Oh, yeah. We think about it every day.
Does anybody know what happens when fertilizer and sulfuric acid get together?
Blue.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any, any other?
Walter.
Hold on.
Walter, who owns the building?
Me.
Walter, who owns the building?
I've never been to a council meeting before. Am I allowed to comment, or can I fill out a card later and do it?
You can fill out a card, just a second, Mr. Pearl, and we'll get Walter up in just a minute.
It'll be brief.
Yes, you can fill out a card, go ahead, speak, and then fill out a card and give it to Ms. Shepherd, okay?
If, if I were in your chairs, and somebody told me they were gonna release the leftovers from a mining process into the city sewer, I'd be pretty interested in corrosion, I'd be pretty interested in what's gonna happen to the lift station, and I'd be pretty interested in what's gonna happen when it gets to the waste treatment plant. 'Cause once it goes in that pipe, it's yours. And, you know, is that okay, or is it not okay? I, I don't know, but?
According to Public Works, it's okay.
That'd be a question I'd worry about.
According to Public Works, who's looked at this?
The other question might be for the, for the fire chief and the police chief, how are they bringing in acids if they're using them, if it's sulfuric? And are they gonna share an intersection at Page Road in the loop with school buses full of little kids? That might be a question that I'd wanna think about. That intersection is problematic anyway. It probably doesn't have a lot of acid going through it today, so?
Thank you, sir.
That, that's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pearl had a question?
Walter, who owns this building?
You wanna know who the LLC is, or who the owners are?
The owners.
Johnny Vaughn is the?
Okay, then I have to excuse myself from this, and probably Andy does, too.
Okay.
Because we've done business with these people. And that, that throws me into a bad situation.
Mr. Ray, does that compromise anything?
So, just having done business with a particular entity doesn't mean you have a legal conflict. Of course, you can always voluntarily abstain from the vote if, if you feel that, you know, you have a personal or ethical conflict. But a legal conflict, there's a very specific definition in the statute about the amount of your income for the previous year that would have come from that particular entity, which was something like 10% of your, of your income for the previous year, or you have, or you own stock in the entity or something like that.
Right. Right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sir in the back, one more time.
Came in late, so I didn't fill out a card.
That's okay.
West Brom at 19 Cedar Hill Road. Just a procedural question. If you do approve the SUP, can you do it with conditions?
Ms. Choi and Mr. Ray, y'all can answer those questions, please.
Yes, there are certain conditions that you can approve with the SUP. Of course, our ordinance would have to be amended to add those additional conditions, but conditions like screening, buffering, if, if they were building new buildings, which they're not proposing, you could even add additional conditions like locations of the building and things such as that. So, yes, some conditions could be added to this SUP.
Wes, did you have any provisions you're thinking of?
Any other questions?
I've got a comment. I've got a comment.
Okay. Ms. Snoddy, I'm sorry.
Wayne, so would you be okay with this building sitting next to you in your community with your children and family members in close proximity of it?
You know, that's kind of a loaded question, but, I mean, no, yeah, it wouldn't bother me. It wouldn't bother me. I mean, I've lived in previous places with a full-scale convenience store operating 24 hours, spilling diesel, which doesn't allow use on this site.
Mr. Perlin.
I really think we need to table this temporarily and find out some more information on this because we have so many concerned citizens out here. Now, I'm going to have to abstain myself ethically and morally because I know these people, and I don't think I could make a good judgment for or against it that would not be scrutinized. We have got one of the best chemical plants in the world in this town, and there's tons and tons of retired chemical engineers that we could bring in and ask about some of the questions that we have. And we don't have to rely on the state or these other people because we go to church with these people, we eat with these people, we, we see them daily. And I, I would have more confidence in asking them these questions right up there than I would what everybody's telling me because they live here, their families are here. And I feel like if we table this temporarily and found out the facts, that we could tell these citizens what's going on, and if we were comfortable with it, I felt like they would be comfortable with it. Right now, they're not. And it's like the gentleman said, I'm up here to service him. I'm not up here to service any company or anybody else. So, I have to abstain from this, but my, my two cents is, I think we need to table it to get better information on this.
Counsel, comments on that?
I agree.
I think it's a good move.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not going to weigh in on that because I won't be here at the next council meeting, so...
Let me sit back, too, then, Ann.
It won't, I mean, yeah, you could say that, too. So, I mean, you, you all can, if you all want to move to table it, that's the choice of this council. If you want to proceed forward, that's a choice of this council as well. So, someone needs to make a motion, one way or the other.
I make a motion, we table it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion, a second, to table this. Is there a timeframe on this tabling? Till the next meeting?
Thirty days. I give it 30 days. That gives us the time for the council to set and us to discuss it and everybody to talk about it.
And real quick, so like, on this, because of the anonymity, where's the, where's this, how's this discussion going to play out and by what we can have? And just, if we need to table it?
I don't know. To answer your question, we'll have to get back with the company, with the consultant, and see what impact that has.
I would think at the very most you should, and, and once again, I won't be here then either, but at the very most, this should be brought back to the next meeting. You should be able to get all the information that you need. If you, if you so elect to table it with the vote, you should be able to get back with this at the very next meeting, which should be two weeks from now, and, and make some sort of decision, if you'd like to table it. But there's no, there's no...
From a, from a required state, state notification process, we would have to table it for 30 days due to state requirements of putting it in, posting it in the newspaper and re-notifying all the neighbors.
Thank you, Angela.
Yes, sir.
I knew you were there for my help. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so there is a motion and a second to table this, this response for 30 days. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold on, hold on, before we say discussion, yes?
No, never mind. So, I answered my, I thought of it.
There's a motion and a second to table this for 30 days. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold on. You have to raise hands. Raise hands, signify by saying aye. Raise hands. Okay, there's, well, there's, there's five, at least five. Okay, then, all opposed? It doesn't matter, it passes. This will be tabled for 30 days until the next adjournment of this council, when that happens. We're now to have a public hearing held to consider application S-24-05. What a good grief. Mr. Ray, I never close the public hearing. Are we okay with that?
I think it's, it's clear enough from the, from the record what the vote was.
Thank you. Public hearing was closed when I said we had enough, all the discussion. Thank you. Public hearing held to consider application S-24-05.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a one-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district. The lots are located on the southeast corner of Davis Street and East Cotton Street. Currently, the lots are vacant, and the applicant is proposing to construct a single-family dwelling on this property. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed.
Moved or approved?
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held to consider application Z-24-03, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone property located on the south side of Page Road from agricultural and single-family four zoning district to townhome zoning district. The property owner is proposing to develop a townhome subdivision on this property. Earlier, earlier in April, the developer did schedule a neighborhood meeting in, here in the council chambers, where the developer presented their project. The developer, along with staff, answered many questions and concerns that the neighbors had, including drainage and traffic flow. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held to consider application Z-24-04, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone property located on Bishop Street from heavy commercial zoning district to single-family four zoning district. Currently, the property mostly is zoned single-family four. However, there's a small portion to the rear of the property that is zoned heavy commercial. The property owner is looking to construct a new single-family home on this lot. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Moved or approved.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held to consider application Z-24-05, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone property located at the northeast corner of Estes Parkway and Eastman Road from agricultural to heavy commercial zoning district. The property owner proposes to construct either a small office or a retail strip center for lease. Eastman Road and Estes are classified as principal arterial roadways, and this type of development is appropriate along these roadways as long as access management is followed. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question, Ms. Choi? I do have Kelly Flat here for questions only. Any question, Ms. Choi or Ms. Flat, or Kelly Flat? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Moved or approved?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Choi. We have action item. Tonight, we have two action items related to the Sabine Industrial District of Longview and our industrial district agreement with Eastman Chemical Company. Since opening in 1950, Eastman has been a tremendous community partner. We're overjoyed that the partnership will continue for years to come. Eastman recently announced a more than $1 billion upgrade to their facility, which is the most significant investment in our community since the founding of our town on 100 acres and more than 150 years ago. As I said during a news conference announcing the project, Eastman's choice to reinvest more than $1 billion here is just really in a word, it's monumental. It's, it's just huge for our community. These items reaffirm the area covered by the agreement and extend the agreement for 15 years. The agreement is essentially an abatement, or in other words, regular annual payments in lieu of taxation. That's what an abatement is. The annual fee schedule and total compared to previous agreement totals were provided to you previously and have been included in the exhibit attached at the meeting's agenda. Do we have that up or not? Okay, there's the exhibit. So, we are considering an ordinance confirming the previous extension of a certain portion of the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Longview, renewing the designation of the Sabine Industrial District of Longview, including additional territory within said district, including all parts of said district within the ETJ of the City of Longview. Any questions of this council? Have you all seen, I guess you've seen the figures? We really, really worked long and hard on this. Roland and the team did an amazing job working with Eastman to readjust and recalculate our agreement with them, and that was a huge part of the reason, I think, that Eastman chose to do their expansion along you because we did give them quite a bit, but we're receiving quite a bit in return. And I think Roland did a phenomenal job of assuring that in the early stages, when it's really important, we really do well, and we continue on through the next 15 years. So, Roland, congratulations on your efforts there. It's been a huge, huge benefit to our community. Any questions, comments, council? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we consider a resolution authorizing the execution of an industrial agreement between City of Longview and Eastman Chemical Company.
Moved or approved? Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council, for doing that. I appreciate that being done while I was still here. We worked on that a long time, and I think we will see, we will first off see that Eastman's been a huge corporate partner for us since the 50s, and now they're going to be even a bigger corporate partner for us in their expansion and in their new industrial agreement, which greatly benefits us, and I think we've made a very, very wise choice in what we've done. So, thank you all for your time and effort on that. We're going to actually go out of order tonight, and we're going to start with the out of the community interest prior to our executive session. So, we will start with you, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. The Pine Tree Convocation will take place on Thursday, the 23rd, at noon at the Pine Tree Road Auditorium. Graduation will be Thursday, May the 23rd, 8 o'clock at the stadium. We're proud to honor Larkin Sidell as our valedictorian and Jose Aranda as our salutatorian. Thank you, and bye to all.
Thank you. Ms. Snoddy?
Yes. I would like to say, first of all, thank you to all teachers and nurses. This is Appreciation Week for us, so I want to make sure that we say thank you to all of you guys for all the hard work that you do. Also, congratulations to Ms. Shannon Moore, who will be taking this seat in a couple of weeks. I wanted to say congratulations to her as well as Kristen. Thanks for being here. To my classmate, Mayor Mack, it has been an amazing time. We've, we've done a couple of big things together, graduating together, now we're leaving out together. So, I wanted to say thank you to you as well. I've learned a lot under your leadership, and I've enjoyed my time here. And to, last but not least, my classmates, our classmates, that are here in the audience, thank you guys so much for always being here and supporting me and everything. So, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Wade?
Nothing, Mayor Mack. Thank you.
Ms. Newstead?
Yes, Mayor. So, applicants, applications are now open for the Leadership Longview through the Longview Chamber of Commerce. So, you can go to their page or website to get the application, and definitely is a program that's great here in Longview. I know Councilwoman Gamboa is alumni. Any other alumni up here? Tim?
Class of 22.
So, it's a, it's a program that develops a lot of leaders, community leaders here. My wife has also went through it, too. So, definitely recommend it for anybody that's looking for that. Again, that's Longview Chamber of Commerce, is Leadership Longview. Also, a big congratulations to the Longview Small Business Development Center. This is our, a hidden jewel that a lot of businesses don't know about, but they all should. They actually won the 2024 SBDC of the Year by North Texas SBDC Network and the U.S. Small Business Administration, and this is, they're a great resource for any business owners. It's completely free for the community in partnership. So, there, if you go there, they're on, they're on the loop. So, if you're a business owner, definitely utilize their resources, and I just want to say congratulations. So, the ones, people that I know personally there, the director, Dave Schelmeyer, and Virgil Connor, and Brandy Flanagan, so, and then thank you, everybody else, for their work. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Gambola?
Leadership Longview Class of 22 is the best class ever, for the record, and thank you so much to Junior Achievement for what they do in our community. I had the pleasure of teaching about our community, voting, and how the city works with Ms. Juarez's class, so thank you. Thank you to everyone who came to visit our beautiful arboretum for Cinco de Mayo. And one comment on something we approved tonight, just on our boards and committees, the only vacancy was for a draftsman slash architect on the Historic Preservation Commission. So, we have left that open for you. So, again, that's a draftsman slash architect on the Historic Preservation Commission. We need you. Please apply.
Mr. Perlin?
That's it for me.
Mr. McPhee? Okay. I first want to thank everyone for coming to the reception today and for city staff for putting all that together. I know that was a chore, and I really appreciate it. You know, I didn't want to do that, but I am very thankful for the, the kind words and the kind thoughts and all your prayers for, for, for what I have been able to be here with you all for this time, and I really appreciate it. I will save my final comments till my last meeting next week, but I want to tell you, Nona, it has been an absolute pleasure working with you. You are just all you've ever been. You've never changed. These girls out here, hey, y'all are awesome. Y'all are so supportive. Class of 78, thank y'all so much. But it's been an honor to be with you, Nona, and I wish you the best and enjoy your grandchildren. I'm going to enjoy mine.
Definitely.
We will now consult with the attorney under Texas government to code 551-071 to discuss and deliberate a settlement between SREPCO and the City of Longview regarding street lighting service provided by SREPCO of the city. We also have a special call city council meeting next Wednesday, May the 15th, at 2:00 p.m. to canvass the general election results. The city council may reconvene in public session for action following this executive session. So, for now, we always retire to executive session.